In the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco Hart, Hotchkiss, Mario Rouse, White, Mayor Snyder.
Here.
And item number one. Letter of recommendation to conductor Hichiro Yamama. Fannella is here, the conductor. He's coming next week, but we're excited about this and his 30th as conductor and music director of the Santa Barbara Chamber Orchestra. And now you're our chair of the board, is that correct?
That's right.
So, well, I just, it's very simple, and we'll be presenting this to him at the Libero next week.
May 20th.
May 20th. That's next week. So on behalf of the Santa Barbara City Council, we congratulate the conductor as he celebrates his 30 years as conductor and musical director of the Santa Barbara Chamber Orchestra. And I look forward to presenting this again in person next week. But do give a chance, an opportunity to tell everyone what's going on with the Chamber Orchestra and the event next week.
Well, the Chamber Orchestra has been at the Libero for, I'd say, over 18 years. I've been connected with them for about 35. Hichiro taught at UCSB. He was on L.A. Philharmonic. He was assistant conductor with Andre Previn. And he has built a very unique orchestra. We had to leave the Libero when it was being remodeled, and it's been our home for a long time. And the Libero Foundation contacted us and said, "We feel like you're our house orchestra. If you could come back." And we went to the music academy that helped us out. But that's 300 seats less. So the big gulp was, how are we going to get back in the Libero and get those 300 seats back? So we've been given some grants for families with kids that are taking music and for underserved folks. And so we're trying to fill the house. And the musicians say that in the Libero, the acoustics are quite unique from other theaters and that they've developed their own sound there. And so they're really eager to get back because the sound is true. It's them playing. It's not miked in a way that changes the sound. And they're probably one of the top chamber orchestras in the country right now. And we are rebuilding the organization. And we have, I think we have, of the 600 seats, we've got about 350 already assigned for or 400. And so you are all welcome. We have a supper club beforehand, which is a little dinner behind the Libero. And we will have plenty of seats if anybody's interested. Just let the Chamber Orchestra know. May 20th, Tuesday. And it's a great organization. It's an institution in this town. So thank you so much. Hichiro will be very pleased to get this. And on his behalf, domo arigato.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment of another number of speaker slips here. We have two minutes up there. So we'll start with Clint Orr, to be followed by Nancy Tunnel.
Mayor Schneider, council members. Of course, I'm Clint Orr. It's good to see a P-51 overhead. As I mentioned before, my father got a purple heart or two in the P-51. The airport honky-tonk feasibility study, it's complete. I've got to type it up a little bit more and deliver it physically and by email this week. You'll have it by next week's session, and we can chat perhaps at that point. I'd like to mention my most memorable conversation over the past few months. I got a random call on a Montecito Journal ad from a gal about 70 in a mobile home park. She said, "Thank you for what you're doing with the airport honky-tonk. My girlfriends and I did a survey on what we wished our husbands did for us over the years. Was it flowers? Was it vacuuming? Was it dishes? Was it sex? No." The number-one answer was, "Take us dancing." So simple, so lost, so sad, and so true. So it brings a tear in my eye and refuels my passion when I wonder if this is all worthwhile. So anyway, after you've read the feasibility study, we'll have a chat hopefully next week. Thank you very much.
Nancy Tunnel will be followed by Phil Walker.
Through the years, regardless of whether the council was conservative or liberal, no amount of protest, no amount of petitions, nothing deters you from enforcing Agenda 21 through Italy. This is why I've criticized you for pledging allegiance to the flag. You totally ignore any democratic process to serve the United Nations' world government agenda. No doubt there are those among you who think the pathetic unwashed masses simply can't comprehend sustainability. But here's something I'll bet you don't know. The people who put together the Rio Earth Summit and Agenda 21 represent the biggest elites, corporations, and financials in the world, hiding, of course, behind a green mask. So it's perfectly reasonable that Agenda 21 gives co-governing power to corporations, NGOs, and organizations with experience in a given field. The public-private partnership that gives these people authority to write laws, regulations, and standards for sustainability. And the big green NGOs at the Rio Earth Summit, we're given to believe they protect nature for nature's sake. But check out their leadership. World Wildlife Fund, U.S. World Wildlife Fund President and CEO Neville Isdell, over 30 years with Coca-Cola, now Coke, and World Wildlife Fund, go around the world buying up water resources, of course, in the name of sustainability and natural conservancy. All that land, from donations, purchases, and acquisitions with government aid, your money, who will oversee the development and resources on that land? Goldman Sachs, Bank of America, Hewlett-Packard, Duke Energy, on and on. This isn't the sustainability model us little folk imagine. No, this is the Great Game Gone Green. And no doubt they're glad to have you do your part. But when you swear to serve the people, you cannot do it with willful ignorance of the unseen power that is defining policy. This is something called a puppet. Thank you.
Phil Walker will be followed by Gail Oshrenko.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. It's hot and dry out, and I want to just put attention to dehydration, what the medical effects can be thereof. And it's good for people to watch their hydration and drink lots of water. Okay, I'm going to talk about the good and not-so-good quickly. The new zoning ordinance, they're soliciting public input, resident input, and it's great. You know, I wish I'd had this six months, a year, two years ago. And I will certainly put my input into it. But I give congratulations to the community development department for making good out of all the frustration and confusion people were sort of confronted with. The not-so-good, boy, you know, just getting from my place, a couple miles away to here, here on Mason Street and a little up from Franklin School, blasting around the corner came two old late teens, early twenties gentlemen on mini motorcycles. And they ride real, real low. And they came around the corner from Mason to the first block of Leesos fast. You know, and I managed, they pulled apart, and I managed to split them, but it was close. And these things are coming with summertime now. It's not quite summer, but it feels like it, more so. There's two major, or one major, one not-so-major fire burning in San Diego County right now. The not-so-good, you know, the gangster injunction, people need help. Early on, as a kid, I was taken, I was brought to a police station, nine or 10 years old, for just delivering a birthday party invitation. The house had been robbed, and you know, you're sort of profiled even at that age. And you carry that baggage. You think about it once in a while. But the thing with the gang injunction, you know, I have family members, me and myself, my wife, we've lived in that neighborhood a long time on the east side, and people need help. And when I had the new roof put on the house, I'll quickly end with this, several roofing contractors said the city needs to bring back the Affordable Low Interest Housing Rehab Loan Program, which dropped off the face of the world about seven or eight years ago. Thank you.
Gail Oshrenko will be followed by Trevor Martinson.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, city council members. I'm here to talk about your proposed regulations to deal with the drought, which I know are item 18 on the agenda, but I didn't see any hearing time.
No, there'll be a public, there'll be public comment on every item on the agenda. So if you want to speak to that item...
So can you give me an idea about when it'll be so I can come back?
After item number 17. It just depends on how long the other items take. So really, that's where it needs to go.
Let me do this, just to be really quick, is leave you my letter to you about it and a letter from myself and a member of the Board of our Condo Association about pool use, because I don't know that she'll be able to come or that I'll make it at the right time, and some notes about why birds need water.
Okay. If you could just leave that with the clerk, otherwise I really need you to hold off your comments until the item comes up on the agenda.
That's fine.
Thank you. Just to be fair. And if you're here, you know, we can certainly call you back up. So, thank you. Trevor Martinson will be followed by Ethan, and then the final speaker will be Andrea Roslinski.
Trevor Martinson, architect, Madam Mayor, council members. You remember last meeting, I was here trying to get an extension on your hearing, our appeal hearing on 510 North Salsapueta. Madam Mayor wasn't here, but any of you that were here, did you realize that the applicant and staff was filing for a building permit at the same time at 6:30 Garden Street, the very same moment I was here? Any of you that were here, were you aware of that? Anyone? No one, I take it. Word comes to mind when you have problems like this, and it's a good one, despicable. You know, we're trying to get through the appeal process and get through this. And here we are, most good architects would not even think of filing for a building permit until they had got through their appeal and design review. I'm really disappointed in that. But nevertheless, when we're here before you at the next council meeting, please keep an open mind. I know you have probably been told that this is a done deal, and we need to get this thing off the books as quick as we can. Please keep an open mind to this. Thank you.
Mayor, city council, I addressed this topic to the Library Commission a couple weeks ago, and I'd like to share it again with you today. My name is Ethan Schenkman. I am native to the local area, born and raised, graduate from Cal Poly after attending SBCC, and have served as an active member from being inaugurated as a civil grand juror. 60% of the respondents under survey funded by the Transit Occupancy Tax Initiative said as first-time visitors, they are never coming back to the region. During the '60s, Frank Burda, operating as a barber, had access to the whiskers of our father. Why we set memorials to remember, not poised to forget. Existing library garden memorial can be maintained by way of paint frequently applied as commercial property located on corners of State and Curio, Saks Fifth Avenue downtown. Front and fountain gauged at less pressure to slide only upon fixture surface, as observed over at SBCC, rather than trickling out to resemble El Paso, could prevent a slippery slope of liability while not demolizing deeply-held sentiments for the locals in the area. Library access to roof balcony, men age of consent 18 or over entering liability waivers could immediately add value to library services and reverse this trend. Operating laptop, drinking coffee, smoking tobacco simultaneous under good weather meets manner of unique demographic preference for tourists downtown Santa Barbara. Because of the unique architecture, roof balcony imposes no injury to secondhand exposure of non-smokers. To comply with written English, equal access to benefit handicapped citizens must accommodate for individual disabilities within federal guidelines. Baggage limitations need to be adjusted as priority, even more than a second language. Inductively, parameters are set to challenge adults over six feet high at front lobby in order to enter premises rather than simply apply equity in each to a handful. Not adhering to equitable standards promotes a discriminatory environment that exclude a height-weight ratio within various physiological predispositions prohibiting benefit to the same advantages for the public.
Thank you. You need to wind up.
Are there any questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity.
Andrea Roslinski will be the final speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I haven't been here for a while, so, because I've been busy at school, and I wasn't here in April, which is Poetry Month, so here's a short one. "I don't drink, I just like pink." See, it says, "Kill the keg." Anyways, okay, last Friday, my son and I were both honored, because last semester, I got on the honor roll at Santa Barbara City College, so I'm bragging. And also, I'm still in school doing permaculture design and soil classes, and I also enjoy acting. And, well, I don't really like talking about the gang injunction, so, but the only thing that upset me was, like, in 2007 was when I was at school. I was at City College also in 2007, and I was in a peace coalition, and we were Googling and finding all kinds of peace, poetry or peace things from like Martin Luther King or Mahatma Gandhi. And then I went downtown, that was when I was skateboarding, and then we got off the bus by the Transit Center, and there was that gang shooting. And Angel Naras did go to McKinley School, I think, with my son. So a lot of stuff touches home, and, but I don't know what the solutions, except for, yeah, maybe, whatever. That's a really touchy subject, so I hope everything works out. I pray about everything. And everything's good, I guess. I didn't plan, I was just coming to say hi to the mayor, because she was out of town, and then I decided to. So...
Thank you.
Yeah, good seeing everybody. Peace.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Did you have a public comment? Is this for public comment?
Later.
For later? Oh, so you can just hand that over to Mr. Armstrong there? If it's for another item on the agenda, public comment, then... Well, this is for, yeah, go right ahead.
My name's Tim Warner. I'm a business owner in Santa Barbara. And kind of last minute, I just saw an article today about short-term rentals, and I'm not sure if Santa Barbara's started to address the problem with vacation rentals. Being a business owner, it's very hard for my employees to find housing in Santa Barbara. And I came across this article in the news press about the vacation rental issue that is happening and solving. It's actually happening here, where we're losing so much housing stock to people that buy second, third homes in Santa Barbara. They're not using them, so they rent them out. You might not be aware, but most vacation rentals are zoning violations. You might want to confirm that with council, but unless a property's zoned for hotel use or R3 or R4, your neighbor shouldn't be renting his house out weekly to, you know, bachelor parties, whatever. But the reason I'm here is our housing stock has decreased year in and year out to vacation rentals. If you pull up VRBO on Google, which I did today, I was shocked to find that there's about 724 listings. It's a big percentage of our housing stock that people can't rent because it's to people from out of town. If you look at the zoning on those, I would say probably 80% of them are illegal use. That means maybe we've got, I think it said 400 and some odd were in the city of Santa Barbara. That means you've got 400 families that could be living here instead of driving up from Ventura or down from Longpoke. That takes a lot of cars off the highway. So I'm hoping that the city can start looking at this, find out if there's anything we can do so that we have our housing stock for our families that live here.
Thank you very much. Okay, that will conclude public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. You have some items to read.
Item number six, birthing policy, designated commercial fishing slips, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara establishing a slip occupancy policy for designated commercial fishing slips in Santa Barbara Harbor and repelling Resolution 11-022. Item number 11, records destruction for Public Works Department, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Public Works Department in the Engineering, Transportation, and Water Resources Divisions. Item number 12, introduction of ordinance for agreements to use recycled water, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the agreement between City of Santa Barbara and Shoreline condominium homeowners association and Shoreline VIA owners association for purchase, use, and delivery of cities' recycled water.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. We have a public comment speaker for item three, and I know we need to move, bring item 13 out separately. But Mr. Walker, if you'd like to speak on item three, if you could read item three, please.
Good afternoon, once again.
Hold on, Mr. Walker.
Creation of water drought fund.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Good afternoon, once again, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. To Mayor Schneider's credit, I remember a year or two ago, you brought up FEMA, approaching FEMA for grant funding, disaster funding for treatment costs at the Cater Water Plant. And now that the federal government, the state of California, the county, the city too, has declared a primary drought emergency, maybe it's time to go skip the secondary step and go to the tertiary end of it and really pursue FEMA emergency grant funds. And, you know, it's amazing, I happened to find this city water project summary that was prepared by Deputy City Administrator Sandra Lozarraga, who became city administrator in 1987 to this date. And watershed management's one of the 10 projects. Think about it, it was a somewhat controlled burn, the Zaca Fire, that left us with all this baggage of sedimentation. FEMA and the Bureau of Reclamation through the Division of River Sedimentation has a whole department that I'm sure would be glad to interact with the city and hopefully work grant funding, emergency funding, which would benefit everybody in this town. Because it seems like we've gone from a primary drought to being in the tertiary phase real quick. And people, you know, see Lake Kachuma at 73,000 acre feet. That's not what you can use, because there are the downriver water releases, especially for Longpoke. And, you know, it is getting very serious. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think anyone needs to vote on that separately unless speak so now, but if you could read item number 13.
Funding agreement with the Santa Barbara Arts Collaborative for community arts workshop at 631 Garden Street.
Hey, Mr. Hart?
Madam Mayor, I'm a newly-appointed member of the Santa Barbara Arts Collaborative Board, so I just ask that this item be voted on separately.
Okay, so you can abstain on that. I'll just say, since it's up right now, how exciting it is to finally see a permanent home for solstice after generations, not just years, but generations, or at least one generation. And happening on the 40th anniversary of solstice is really quite exciting. So with that, if we could have a motion for item 13?
So moved.
Okay, moved and one of those, moved and one of those seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And any abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the consent calendar, or is there a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved and seconded all.
Madam Mayor, may I just thank Santos Escobar for the integrated pest management report? Thank you.
Yep, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today, had a long agenda, and let me just turn to that so I don't miss anything. Well, first of all, an item that we just approved, the creation of a water drought fund, was on the Finance Committee agenda, as well as a review of the third quarter city finances, and finally, a review of the fiscal 2015 recommended budget, the various fees and fee changes proposed for the next year.
Great, thank you. A report from the Ordnance Committee, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Ordnance Committee met today to discuss requirements of Senate Bill Two regarding emergency shelter zoning. And we voted 2 to 1 to forward staff recommendations, planning commission that will review, and then subsequently forward that to council for induction. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 16.
Fiscal year 2014, third quarter review.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I am Julie Nemus. I'm the county manager for the Finance Department. Today, we are presenting the third quarter financial review for fiscal year 2014. We did just present it in detail to the Finance Committee, so I don't plan on going into a lot of detail. You'll find attached to your report several pages of proposed budget adjustments that I won't be going into unless you have specific questions. We'll be focusing on the main body of the report. We'll be going over first the general fund revenues, which Jeannie Wilson, our Treasury Manager, will be discussing. Then I'll be getting into the general fund expenditures, and finally, the enterprise funds. I'll pass it off to Jeannie Wilson now.
Thank you very much, Mayor Schneider and council members. Overall, general fund revenues are trending, as expected, as indicated in the staff report, at just over 69% for the first three quarters of the year. Some of these revenues are not received evenly throughout the year, such as tax revenues. So I'll review those with you on the first slide, as you can see. Most significant tax revenues that I'll be discussing are sales tax, property tax, and TOT. These revenues, as I mentioned, sales tax and property tax are not received evenly throughout the year, so we use a three-year average to look at our analysis and see how we're trending. Sales tax is budgeted at $21 million, and we're at about 69%, which, again, with our three-year average, is just in line is what we expect. We do see slightly higher variance through the first three quarters, but we do expect that at the end of the year, we will be very, very close to budget, if not just slightly under budget with our current projections. Property tax at $25.4 million is trending at 55%. Again, these revenues are received throughout the year at specific times, not evenly. We are happy to see that property tax revenues are actually coming at higher than what we estimated. We projected a 2% growth, an increase in assessed valuation. We received county information and data that shows that we'll be receiving assessed valuation increases of about 4.3%. The end result to us at the end of the year is about $700,000 in additional property tax revenue. TOT, $16.2 million is the budget for the year. We're at 77% through the first three quarters. We do anticipate that this trend will continue, and we expect the variance of $364,000 at the end of the fiscal year as well. The next slide categorizes our other revenues. These revenues include licenses and permits, fines, forfeitures, franchise fees, use of money in property, which is our interest, and intergovernmental, which I'll discuss in a little more detail, and miscellaneous. As you can see, overall, we are at 80%, and this is above our three-year average, $922,000 above our budget comparisons. The largest variance is the intergovernmental category. This category represents fire mutual aid reimbursements, which have exceeded what was originally estimated by the fire department. So we do expect that for the year, we will have revenues in excess of budget of, I believe it's close to $1 million. Again, there are expenditures that offset these mutual aid reimbursements, and Julie will be pointing those out a little later in her presentation. Miscellaneous categories, $9.3 million, and the next table will break that category down a little further. The largest component of miscellaneous charges represents overhead allocations, $6.2 million. Overhead allocations are charges from the general fund to other funds for administrative charges, to reimburse the funds for staff work that those other funds use. So as you can see, we're trending overall in miscellaneous charges, as we should be at just over 76% for the first three quarters. The next slide is our fees and charges, fees and service charges. These are the charges that departments charge for services. As you can see, overall, we're slightly under, at 72% for the first three quarters on a year-to-date basis. Community development represents one of the largest components of that, at $347,000 under budget. This primarily is a result of development and building-related activity. is a result of development and building-related activity to date. And as a result of that slowdown, revenue estimates, which are projections at the beginning of the year, are not being met. Parks and Recreation fees are slightly down as well. However, Parks and Recreation fees are, as a result of seasonal activity, generally, at the end of the fiscal year, at the beginning of the year, we see a spike in revenue activity. And we expect that at year-end, parks and recreation will be at their estimated budget levels, as we see it so far. Library fees are slightly over year-to-date, on a year-to-date basis, and that's as a result of some of the revenue streams, such as the county per capita fees that we receive earlier in the year for the remainder of the year. So we expect those fees also at the end of the year to reach the levels that we budgeted. And that really covers revenues for general fund. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Questions?
Nope.
I think the Finance Committee went through this pretty thoroughly. Yes?
Yeah.
I'm going to be now focusing on general fund expenditures. Because I go into a lot of detail on variances in your attachment, I'm only going to be focusing on negative variances or large variances that we haven't discussed at mid-year. I'll be focusing on the three columns, adjusted annual budget, year-to-date budget, and the variance without encumbrances. The first variance I'd like to bring to your attention is administrative services. It is coming in about $216,000 under budget. This is primarily due to about $100,000 in salary savings due to vacancy in human resources that may be filled by year-end, but may not be filled till the following fiscal year. In addition, there's about $90,000 in savings related to the November 2013 vote-by-mail election, and those will be realized through the end of the year. The next variance is about $133,000 over budget for police. This is related to overtime salaries. This is an issue that we've been monitoring throughout the year. Part of this is related to special event activities. These relate to things such as the cruise ships, overtime needed to monitor cruise ship activities, the county bowl events, some other special events. There is a corresponding revenue increase, higher than budget, of about $40,000. We'll be watching that. We may come back and request a budget adjustment at year-end to increase estimated revenues and appropriations for those special event revenues and expenditures that exceeded budget. But there may be more throughout the year, so we're going to wait on that right now. In addition, staff's going to be closely watching this number to see if additional cost-cutting measures are needed to offset these overtime costs, or if additional appropriations may be needed by the end of the year. The next variance is something that we've also discussed at both first quarter and mid-year. It's related to fire. This is all related to mutual aid activities. There is a direct corresponding increase also in revenues. It's all for mutual aid activities, and the increase in revenues above budget exceeds this increase in expenditures. The final variance I'd like to talk about is Public Works. Public Works is coming in under budget by about $379,000. A lot of this is related to across-the-board savings, just prudent use of expenditures. But there is about $90,000 of unspent project costs for the underground tank project, underground tank project. It may not be spent this year. It may be delayed to next year. So that's about what makes the difference. Overall, the general fund is coming in about $1.7 million under budget. But I do want to qualify that a little bit, because there are some rather large expenditures that make up some of those variances that are purely a timing difference. Some of the variances, both in community development, community promotion, are timing difference in payments. So that will, that gap between variance without encumbrance and year-to-date actual will actually lessen as we get to year-end. Any questions before I move on? All right, thank you. I'm going to now focus on enterprise funds. Once again, I'm going to focus on the same three columns, and I'm only going to touch on the negative variances or the large variances we haven't discussed previously. The first one I'd like to talk about is the solid waste fund. The solid waste fund has, there's a direct correlation between payments to the city's hauler, trash hauler, and customer billings. So when there's an increase in customer billings, there's a corresponding increase in payments, expenditures, to the city's trash hauler. So that's why you see expenditures exceeding, expenses exceeding budget by about $73,000, and you're also seeing revenues exceeding budget by over $400,000. Staff is anticipating by year-end, there is going to be some salary savings, some other cost savings. So in your packet, you'll see that there has been a requested budget adjustment to increase estimated revenues and appropriations for about $200,000 is where staff expects to end the year, and additional appropriations needed for those increase in expenses.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there, is any part of the solid waste fund adjustment for the recycling, the difference in way we calculated recycling weight, does that play into that? Mr. Samario is giving me the answer over there right now.
Yeah, could you repeat the question? I want to make sure I understood what you were asking.
We had a reset of our calculations, the way we either were compensated for, or compensated the hauler for, our recycled weight in hauling. So I wonder if that played into this, in this number at all?
Yeah, I don't think so. For the most part, you know, we make estimates, made estimates last year for what we expect to be receiving this year, and those numbers were just off. We were seeing fewer people actually migrating to recycling containers than we thought. But those are just rough estimates. We created a contract with Marburg. So we're just seeing higher-than-expected revenues, which means we're paying more to the haulers. And that's why, you know, you see those variances there.
The next variance I'd like to discuss is related to the water fund. The expenses are under budget by about $8 million. This is almost entirely related to $6 million of unspent funds for water purchases and conveyance fees, of which about $4 million was just recently approved by council and appropriated about two months ago in February. This, it's estimated that this will most likely be spent towards the end of this year, early fiscal year 15. So that makes up about $6 million of that $8 million. In addition, there's about $1 million that was budgeted this year for the Ortega groundwater treatment plant. But as of March 31st, only about $200,000 was spent. And the last variance I was going to touch on is the airport fund. Right now, expenses are showing over budget by about $1 million. This is purely a timing difference in how debt service transfers are made, and it will resolve itself by year-end. Any questions? That would be the end of my presentation. Great. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't see any public speaker slips on this either. No. Okay, but we do need a motion to accept the statements and approve the third quarter adjustments.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Okay, all in favor? Aye? Great. Thank you very much. All right. Item number seventeen.
Annual wastewater collection system report.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members, my name's Chris Toth. I'm wastewater system manager, presenting the annual wastewater collection system report for calendar year Our presentation today will basically touch these areas. We're going to give a little consent decree background, talk about our sewer system management plan update, our sanitary sewer overflow history in recent years, discuss a little bit our sewer system maintenance, talk about our capital improvement program, condition assessment, and rehabilitation work, and then talk briefly about costs associated with the consent decree. By way of background, we've had a high number of SSO events annually in the past five or more years. We did hire consultants to assist us in updating our work practices and activities. And we did this in January 2011. We've been doing it since then. Channelkeeper filed court complaint against the city in April 2011. And then, working with Channelkeeper, the city negotiated a consent decree, which was filed in May of 2012. So the consent decree talks about milestones for completion, and it includes the sanitary sewer system management plan documentation updates. That includes updating all the work plans, which we'll talk about in a second. It talks about some technology-related activities, specifically linking our geographic information system to the city's computer maintenance management system for collection system work. It talks about database development for sewer invert elevations and establishing those for pipes relative to storm drain pipe. It prescribes CIP project milestones to be met, and we've done that for the years 2012 and 2013. And it also talks about annual reports to be developed. We've done that for 2012 and 2013. And the presentation today is to present the 2013 annual report. So talking a little more detail about our sewer system management plan. These were work plans, documents that were developed and implemented in the past couple of years. And as you can see, it's pretty extensive. It covers the wide gamut that are involved with sewer management activities, sewer collection system management activities. It touches on the fat soil and grease program, our SSO response activities, cleaning and inspection work, our closed-circuit television, rehabilitation, and replacement work. It discusses our capacity plan, our wastewater system master plan. It talks about what we do with our lift stations in terms of maintenance, inspection, and condition assessment. There are areas that touch on our IT governance, that is, how all of our computer systems that we use to do our work interrelate and work together. Talks about flow monitoring that's involved with our wastewater collection system, and then it does discuss as well exfiltration abatement. So the sewer system management plan was updated in the past several years, and it was basically approved by city council last year. I believe it was in August 2013. That is a requirement by the State Water Resources Control Board, as one of its orders, that all agencies produce these documents on a regular basis and have them approved by their governing body, and that they get updated on a continual improvement basis every five years. So that's what city council did last year, was approve the sewer system management plan. So it's something that we'll see again in a few more years, as it gets updated and comes around again. Talking a bit about our sewer spill history, the consent decree provides performance standards for our SSO events. And as you can see, in 2012, it started with an SSO performance goal of 18 sanitary sewer overflows, and it works its way down to 2016, where the city is to achieve eight. Our actual performance is shown in the next column. As you can see in 2012, we actually missed that performance goal by two spills. In 2013, the year that we're making this report for, we've actually done very well. Our goal was 15 SSOs, and we've had only nine. In 2014, we're barely on track to make our goal of 12 SSO events, since we've had five this year already. However, on the good side, they're very, very small volume spills. And though we track primarily the number of events, another environmental consideration is the volume of sewage that overflows associated with that event and where the sewage goes. And so all these spills that I'm reporting and talking about, both in 2013 and 2014, for the most part, were very small volume spill events. Looking at chart on this slide, we can see sort of the history of SSO events. And you see sort of a distinct break in the trend between 2010 and 2011. So we've started implementing in that time period better maintenance practices, as well as gearing up our capital improvement program project work. And the result is that the number of SSO events has dropped dramatically. It's an unofficial or unwritten statement that best managed agencies have somewhere in the range of two SSO events to four SSO events per 100 miles of collection system per year. I know that's kind of a thick metric, but for our system, we're 257 miles of pipe. So for us to have two SSO events per 100 miles per year, that translates to about five SSOs per year. On the upper range of being a best practice agency, if we were to have four SSOs per 100 miles per year, that would bring us to about 10 SSO events. So from that, we can see that last year, with nine SSO events, we have broken into that best practice agency grouping. Our challenge now is to stay down in this lower range and not go back up again, because going back up would be bad. With that said, roots have been our primary cause of SSOs, and you can see these two charts. The green bars show 2012, the yellow bars show 2013, and these are the major causes of our SSO events, roots to bring grease. And with that said, we've done a very good job this last year of reducing the number of root-related spills. And looking to the future, in 2014, 2015, we're finding that fat soil and grease, fog-related spills will probably be as big a challenge to us as root-related spills.
Mr. Francisco has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Toth, you said that there was a sort of a best practices metric that stated, in a system our size, you might have five to 10 SSOs per year. Is there, is there a similar metric for volume of spills?
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, there isn't, there isn't. I mean, the challenge with volume of spills is what was the cause of the spill? If a spill is related to a pump station event, for example, sometimes you can have very large volumes of sewage come as a part of that event. Similarly, if the spill event is associated with a large diameter pipe, you can have a big volume that's associated with that SSO event. And so it gets to be an interesting challenge. I'm not aware of a direct correlation between volume and SSO event. One clear designation of significance to our regulators is whether or not a spill reaches a public water, reaches a creek, or the ocean, or river. And so with us, here in the last couple of years, with the exception of basically one event in 2012, which we'll talk about briefly here, we've had very, very small volume spills, and that's just really good. It's a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
You keep talking about volume, so two gallons to you is a small volume? I mean, just to give the public an idea of, you know, you say sewage spill, and people get panicky.
Yes. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, we just had a spill event over the weekend. It was our fifth spill event for this calendar year, and it was a two-gallon spill. And that, basically, what it did was it wetted the ground surrounding the sewer manhole, and that was the environmental impact. It still counts as a spill. It's an SSO event, but that's minimal impact. Clearly, when the volume is large enough that it can go to a creek or watershed, it's much more significant. Or get into a storm drain, it goes to the ocean, that's much more.
And we're trying not to have any, right?
We're trying not to. So roots has been our historic problem, and we feel that we're making great inroads with that, and it's putting us focused now on other causes of spills. So this gets to the volume issue a little bit. Last year, towards the end of 2012, in the large green bars there, there was a spill event that occurred in December, and it occurred during a rain event, and it was a very, very small flow of wastewater, but yet it wasn't really reported to the city for a couple of days. And as a result of that, the volume was, of that spill was approximately 6,000 gallons all by itself. So though we had 20 spill events in 2012, most of the volume was associated with a single event. And the single event was largely due just because the city didn't know about it. And as we did the investigation on that spill event, we found out that, yes, someone identified it, and it looked like it was spilling, and that manhole was wet, and there was some water dripping out of it a few days ago. But it wasn't reported immediately, so we had to start the clock there, calculate how much volume could have gone from the sewage system during that time period, and it was a large amount. It was fairly large, 6,000 gallons. So that explains most of the spill volume in 2012. And what you see in 2014, by comparison with the nine spills that we had, that the volume that we spilled and did not capture was only 180 gallons, so significantly less. This map simply shows where the spill events, the nine spill events occurred in 2013, and the point of it is just to show that they're literally all over the map. It's not like it's one part of town, or just along the coast, or along one area. It's pretty well spread out throughout the city. I'm going to talk briefly on sewer system maintenance at this time. I'm going to talk briefly on sewer system maintenance at this time, and we're talking here about the number of cleaning miles that we've completed in 2012 and 2013. And when you talk mileage of cleaning pipe, you talk both in terms of cleaning miles and geographic miles. Basically, geographic miles are the number of physical pipes that you have cleaned for a given year. Cleaning miles represent the fact that for some of our pipes, we have to clean them several times, some monthly during the course of that year. So that's why we have 172 miles of geographic miles that we cleaned in 2013, and yet we actually cleaned 236 miles, because that difference represents pipes that we've cleaned multiple times. This map just kind of gives a brief show of where the pipes were in 2013, representing the 241, oh, 2012 and 2013, representing the 240 miles of pipes that we've cleaned to date. Again, our total system is 257 miles, so that shows us that, kind of in that yellow, oranges color, those are the pipes representing 16 and a half miles that we have yet to clean in our system, that we haven't cleaned since the beginning of 2012. Our goal is to have a five-year cleaning cycle, and so those 16 and a half miles are pipes that we have to touch in the next three years. A lot of those pipes represent difficult pipes to clean, easements, private property issues, things like that. In terms of overall condition findings from our cleaning mileage, we can see between 2012 and 2013 that only a small number of miles of pipe represent our dirtiest pipes. You know, the miles that are heavy or medium when we clean them represent a small fraction of the total miles that we've cleaned in the last couple of years. This map again just sort of shows the overall cleaning mileage map, and that, you know, the heavy pipe is kind of spread around the system, as are the light and clear pipe. It's not that all the heavy pipe's just in one location. I'm going to talk briefly about pipe condition assessment work right now. We closed circuit televised approximately 57 miles of pipe this last year, and about half of it was with contractors, and half of it was with city staff, to make a long story short. The PACP scores of five and four are our most dirty pipe, and with that said, we have, between the two fours and fives, we have about 20 miles of pipe that is pipe in our worst condition, and that's what we're going to be focusing on in the coming year for our actual construction work.
So that's pipe that will require a replacement?
Rehabilitation, spot repair primarily. The only reason we would replace a pipe is if we were going to upsize it, that is, increase its diameter.
When you say rehabilitation, what does that involve?
That means that primarily, that's lining the pipe. So we slightly reduce the inside diameter of the pipe, but we put a plastic sleeve through it. It's like a fiberglass sleeve. So this is where the CCTV work was. Last year, we accomplished 28, almost 29 miles of that, and it's spread throughout the city. For calendar year 14, we're greatly reducing the number of CCTV miles. One reason is because we've already identified a fair amount of pipe that we need to rehabilitate and repair. Also, for just looking at the work activities we're doing, this contract work we're planning for this current year would best fit our budget so that we can successfully complete all the other activities that we're performing. Our contract goal over the system-wide procedure is to approximately do 26 miles of CCTV work per year, and this just shows over the next several years primarily where that work would be located. To talk now about pipe rehabilitation and repair, this is probably one of the most busy charts in the entire presentation, but it tells a story. We have both accelerated pipe that we're talking about in 2012 and 2013 and regular pipe. The accelerated pipe, some people talk as high-risk pipe, but it's pipe that we're working to complete, our investigation on, and also any rehabilitation that we need to do. Last year, because of the overall consent decree budget cap, we only accomplished one mile of pipe. This year, we've accomplished 2.4 miles of pipe, and you can see there that 0.4 miles of pipe we're carrying over into the next year. Similarly, on regular pipe, we accomplished 4.1 miles in 2012, and we've done 3.2 miles in 2013, and we have carryovers associated with the regular pipe as well, of which 0.64 miles we're planning to carry over into this current year. So in 2014, bringing over the 0.4 miles carryover from 2013, we're planning to do a total of 2.4 miles of accelerated or high-risk pipe. And our regular pipe, we're planning to do 3.2 miles, of which 0.64 miles is carryover from 2013. So to see how that translates to costs, this briefly shows our consent decree costs associated with calendar year 12 and calendar year 2013, and we spent $5.9 million in 2012 on our overall consent decree-related costs, although we had a cap of $5.1 million. Now, because we had a lot of activities going on at the same time, we were midway through the year when we recognized that we were hitting this overall cap, and we had not yet completed all the accelerated or high-risk pipe work that we needed to do in 2012. Because we hit the cap, and not only that, we went way over it by over $800,000, we did delay any work on high-risk pipe and have done more on that high-risk pipe this year in 2013. And so you see in 2013, the accelerated capital work is $994,000. The goal in the consent decree is $900,000. We've overspent that goal on accelerated pipe this year by about $95,000. So looking at the accelerated pipe costs in greater detail, we see that a lot of the work in 2012 was associated with soft costs, CCTV survey and analysis, and not so much the hard costs of repair and rehabilitation, whereas this year in 2013, we were able to spend larger amounts on CCTV as well as on the rehabilitation construction work. So that kind of concludes the 2013 work effort that we've submitted this year. And just to talk about what we're currently doing in 2014, we have a chemical root control program that we're piloting. Our goal this year is to do 16 miles of chemical root control pipe this calendar year. We went through the Integrated Pest Management Board, and as a part of that work, we have foamed two miles of the 16 miles of pipe already, and we're studying the effects of that to make sure we do not harm any trees that were associated with that roof foaming work, and we're planning to have our contractors come back in August or so this year to complete that work. We've, in terms of grease control, again, that is a focus that we have because of our fog-related SSOs, and so we have hired a contractor to improve our food service establishments inspections enforcement, and that work's ongoing. I will note that we have a May 29 outreach event that we're sponsoring, and we're putting out the announcements to all the food service establishments this week so that they can attend that meeting, where we'll give them some information updates on our FSC inspections and related issues, and I imagine we'll have future events following that as well. We have hired a consultant to update our collection system master plan, and so they are working on a collection system computer model update, which will help us in the future study neighborhood capacity issues that we may have, and they're using GIS to analyze our entire system. So in summary, it's been a very successful year for our wastewater collection system activities in 2013. We have a successful current year, and basically, the work that we've done the last several years has really laid the groundwork to ensure that we will have long-term success with our wastewater collection system activities. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
And I know Channel Keeper has up to 20 minutes for the consent decree to give their presentation. Before that, any questions for staff? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Toth, roots being the biggest cost of the events, are those mostly from laterals? Are those in mains, or is it a combination of the two?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, it's a combination of the two. And we're getting a better handle on both. The spill event that I talked about in December 2012, where we had that 6,000-gallon spill, that spill was caused by roots coming out of a lateral, entering the city sewer main, and then causing a blockage in the city main.
And during the normal course of your cleaning maintenance, are you able to detect when there are lateral issues and then notify the property owner of his lateral issues?
There are times that we are able to do that. Often, we are able to determine that through CCTV activities, our television activities in the pipe, rather than simply cleaning, and that falls into our sewer lateral inspection program, and we do notify the property owners, and we do coordinate with them to make repairs or replacements of their sewer laterals.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Well, thank you for the very thorough report. Just since I'm new, is this level of analysis and data collection and, you know, specific mapping, is this a new work product as a result of the consent decree, or is this something that you have been doing historically?
It's something we began in advance of the consent decree, and the consent decree incorporated the work that we were developing at that time.
Okay. And then the other question I had was that, you know, we're in a drought, so we're having fewer rain events. Is there, I mean, what would you describe the relationship of, you know, rain to spills is in terms of this increased work effort? I mean, you probably can't predict, but what would you, how would you generalize that, the relationship of the drought to these events, to the work that you're doing?
In terms of root growth in sewer pipes, I've heard it both ways. In times of drought, people say, well, the roots go attack the sewer pipes more aggressively because they're looking for water. And in times when there's plenty of rainfall, I hear that, well, there's so much rainfall that the roots are just growing really well this year. And so I've heard that both ways. But the one correlation that is, that has been proven, is that during wet weather winters, the odds of having a public water spill, a larger volume spill that reaches a creek or the ocean, that the odds are much greater of a public water spill during wet winters.
Yes, we shouldn't be lulled into a false sense of complacency by the fact that we have had small volume, fewer events necessarily, because we have also had not-large rainfall events?
That's correct. And also sewer spills, you just can't predict, you know, I mean, like, they come in groupings. It's not like you have one spill a month. It's like you can have three or four spills within a week and then have nothing for three months. It's just very hard to correlate.
Okay, well, thank you. It's really helpful.
Okay, Ms. Fedman. There's a timer right there, as you know.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good afternoon. Thank you very much for this opportunity to comment on the city's annual wastewater collection system report for 2013. We've reviewed the report along with the annual exfiltration abatement program plan for 2013 and are pleased and impressed with the progress and results that they reflect, and I won't take probably more than five minutes of your time. I want to acknowledge and thank your staff for all the hard work and additional effort that's been made to accelerate improvements to the city's sewer system and to reduce spills. Channel Keeper recognizes that this has been and will continue to be a lot of hard work, and that the city has invested substantial resources and time into complying with our settlement agreement, and we very much appreciate that. We commend the significant decrease in the number of spills in 2013. As you heard, a total of nine, which represents a 55% reduction over the previous year, and well under the spill performance standard of 15 as laid out in our settlement agreement. Also commendable is the reduction in the volume of spills. The new work plans and improved practices put into place by the city over the past few years seem to be having a positive effect on reducing both the number and volume of spills, which we think is wonderful. We also commend the city's accomplishments in 2013 related to the rehabilitation and repair of sewer mains. The city rehabilitated or repaired 4.11 miles in 2013, 2.39 of which were those with a high risk of exfiltration, and 1.72, which were non-high risk. Our agreement requires the repair or rehabilitation of two miles of high-risk pipe and 2.56 miles of non-high-risk pipe per year, and allows for rollover if these goals are exceeded in the previous year. As we just heard, the city in 2012 repaired or rehabbed 4.1 miles of non-high-risk pipe, so a credit of 1.54 miles was rolled over to 2013. So thus, the city technically exceeded the 2.56-mile goal for 2013. That was 1.54 from 2012 plus the 1.72 completed in 2013. Our settlement agreement requires the city to spend up to $900,000 per year to rehabilitate or replace an additional two miles of high-risk pipe, and if you spend less, the difference rolls over into what you would have available to spend to meet the two-mile goal in suing years. The city only repaired 1.02 miles of high-risk pipe in 2012 at a cost of $643,000, thus fell short of the two-mile high-risk pipe requirement by just under a mile, and had $257,000 left to roll over and spend in 2013. We had expressed our hope at this time last year that you would make up that difference in 2013. 0.39 miles of that deficit was made up last year. This leaves 0.59 miles of a deficit remaining from 2012. Of the 1.16 million available for high-risk pipe repair in 2013, that's $900,000 plus the $257,000 rolled over from last year, or sorry, from 2012, the city spent $995,000 to repair 2.3 miles of high-risk pipe in 2013. I know this is a lot of numbers, sorry. Channel Keeper is pleased that the city exceeded the two-mile goal. We do believe it would have been appropriate for the city to spend the additional $163,000 available to do more to address the high-risk pipe deficit from 2012. However, from what we were able to glean from the 2013 report, the city is planning to repair or replace 2.36 miles of high-risk pipe in 2014. So it appears as though the city is continuing to progress towards closing that remaining high-risk pipe repaired deficit from 2012, and Channel Keeper sincerely appreciates the city's commitment to doing so. I had not heard until today from Mr. Toth's presentation that the city plans on carrying over a credit of 0.4 miles of high-risk pipe from 2012, so I would like the opportunity to discuss that with your staff, because there seems to be a little disagreement on the carryover versus the deficit, so I would appreciate the opportunity to talk about that. But in closing, I just want to reiterate Channel Keeper's support and commendation for the city's excellent progress in 2013 in significantly reducing sewage spills and accelerating the rehabilitation and repair of sewage pipes, particularly those with a high risk of exfiltration. We look forward to further progress in the coming years, which will continue to help improve water quality in Santa Barbara's creeks and beaches, which is a goal that I think we all share. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, did you have a question? Okay, that's right. Thank you very much for your comments, and I think we all, we've all said this, we're all wanting the same thing, and it looks like we're going in the right direction. Hopefully, that will keep going in the right direction, so thank you, everyone, for your work. There's no motion I don't think we need for today, so thank you for your report.
Thank you very much.
I don't see any other speaker slips on the item. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item number 18.
Introduction of ordinance to amend the Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Chapter 1420, and review proposed drought water regulations, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Chapter 14.20 of the municipal code with respect to unlawful water use and regulations during water shortage conditions, and consider water use regulations proposed to be effective upon declaration of stage-two drought condition.
Thank you. Oh, there's a, wow, we got current, almost gone, and came back. Sorry, we have some staffing things going on. Please, whenever you're ready, welcome. Mr. Hagmark, right.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, it's an unprecedented time, and so we're tapping into all the resources we have available to ourselves here. So the ordinance before you today, the amendment that we have, is basically, there's two major items here that we're trying to clarify. One is the unlawful use of water related specifically to the stealing or theft of water, and that's really kind of an administrative cleanup. And the other change that we're trying to address is basically building in some flexibility and clarity to dealing with water shortages, specifically wanting to broaden the ordinance specifically to include any water shortage. It may be from an earthquake, it may be from a collapse of one of the tunnels that feeds water over to the city, but it's kind of making it more general so that when one of those emergency situations happens and we need to call for water shortages, it will be done through a discussion at the time of the event with council chiming in on what those regulations specifically be. And so, and then finally, as part of this, we also wanted to get your feedback on proposed drought regulations that we will be bringing forth next. drought regulations that we will be bringing forth next week when we discuss the stage-two, going to a stage-two condition. And so we're looking for feedback on that item in addition to approval of moving forward with the ordinance. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Ferguson, project manager, to walk you through the ordinance changes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We will go through the presentation, and as Joshua said, we would give you a chance to give us some input on the proposed regulations as well as adoption of the ordinance amending the municipal code. Quick overview, breaking it down into a little bit of discussion about what we've done since February to get ready for stage-two, particularly in relation to regulations. Secondly, talk about what the proposed amendment would do and what it wouldn't do. And finally, take your input on the proposed regulations that were reviewed by ordinance committee on late April with a couple of recommendations that came out of that. First of all, taking a quick look at current municipal code language, Chapter 1420. The first one is really the most important for today's discussion. It actually codifies the regulations that are in effect automatically during the stage-two and stage-three drought condition. That will be important to our discussion later, as well as the authorization to adopt additional regulations by resolution. This chapter also defines an exemption process. It sets penalties and charges for violations, and it sets forth the administrative process for notices and hearings in the event of violations and how they'll be handled. This all was developed in '89 in preparation for the last drought. We found that it worked pretty well overall. There is one thing that we think needs to be fixed so that we can be more responsive as we address current drought. There is a potential for confusion because, as I mentioned, the rules are codified in the municipal code very specifically, and yet there is also the authority for the council to adopt additional regulations or modifications as necessary to address certain circumstances. And we know that in any particular water shortage condition, there will be different requirements, different needs. It could be a drought situation, which is most common. It could be a tunnel collapse. It could be a peak delivery limitation of some sort. There needs to be flexibility, and most likely, those regulations that are written and adopted for a particular situation will not match exactly with the language that was codified originally. And so the result is we have two sets of regulations, and that provides confusion. And it proved to be an issue last time because they were cited by the media by reference to municipal code rather than the resolution. So in order to address that one deficiency that we see in our drought regulations and ordinance processes, we propose to amend the municipal code to take the specific regulations out of the code, but to retain the authority for council to adopt those regulations by resolution and to be fully enforceable by the municipal code. We've also incorporated the broader term water shortage condition because drought is not our only vulnerability. We could have other situations, as I mentioned earlier, and also the state is moving toward the broader term to address different types of shortage conditions. The new ordinance would also retain the penalties and administrative process that was established that worked well, and it adds some specific prohibitions on certain types of water use under all conditions. We took this as an opportunity while we were in that section of the code to make those additions that we've been meaning to do for some time. So at this point, I'll stop and see if there are any questions about that process, about amending the code, what the intent is to make the amendment, and address any questions that you have, and then we can go on and discuss the regulations themselves, the proposed regulations. So as you probably know, we are preparing a recommendation for stage-two that will come to you next week. That would be adoption of a resolution that establishes stage-two condition, and part of that resolution would be the regulations that would be in effect. So you see the regulations disappearing from the municipal code, and they appear again in the code, in the resolution that would be adopted. One set of regulations can be changed on any Tuesday to address changes that happen, provide additional flexibility to responders, shortage conditions, as they develop and new issues come up. So I'll run through those, the regulations that are proposed, and then we can take comment and discussion on those to help us in preparing our final recommendation for next week. First of all, the sort of an overarching rule is that whenever there's a hose involved, it should have shut-off nozzle on it. We start with that one because that's a big thing that we see around town a lot. It's a way of getting people's attention to make sure everybody's using the right kind of nozzle, and it can be a significant savings of water. Also, washing of pavement, other hard surfaces generally prohibited. In a time like this, we need to limit that type of use to only things that are necessary for preventive maintenance, preparation for painting, things like that. In that case, it would be done by pressure washer and with the minimum amount of water used necessary to accomplish that. Irrigation is a big part of our response on stage-two, and we feel it's very important to limit that irrigation to evening and early morning hours. The regulations are set up to establish irrigation schedules for automatic systems, a little bit more limited time for your automatic systems, and broader authority to irrigate for manual irrigation to help people accommodate their schedule, but still stay within the hours when it's most efficient to irrigate. Vehicles and boats, they would be required to wash at commercial facilities that recycle the water or at your home or business by the hose with a shut-off nozzle. Again, the shut-off nozzle is an important part of that. On the use of water in ornamental fountains, I'm sorry, fountains and ornamental water features, we had a suggestion at the ordinance committee from Councilmember Hotchkiss that there'd be some exception provided for fish or other animals that are in those fountains. We thought about that quite a bit, and it seems to make sense that if there's an existing use, that that be allowed to continue, but that it be limited in terms of the amount of circulation of water and the amount of water that's actually needed for those animals to survive. So that would be something for the council to discuss. We're recommending the pools and spas be covered when not in use. Big source of evaporation, water loss there, and something that we can't afford at this point as we go into stage-two and possibly further. We also want to look at the draining of pools. We want people to think twice about just draining the whole pool, refilling it. They may not be bothered by the cost of that, but in many cases, it may not be necessary. So we are proposing that they be allowed to drain no more than one-third in order to address water quality. And if additional draining is needed, it can be authorized if it's a threat to the equipment and the pool or in order to repair the pool in a manner that requires fully draining the pool. Typical responses for restaurants and hotels to post notices, that's part of our requirement, and the serving of water upon request only. It's a water-saving measure, but it's also a symbolic measure that gets the word out there, helps people remember that we are in a drought situation. And a new one that we've added this time is that those businesses that provide showers are required to post those notices and promote that limitation of use. There are a lot of types of pools and gyms and that type of operation that have this use, and it's a good way to promote water conservation as well. So that's a summary of the regulations, and we'd be happy to take any questions the council might have, again, for guidance in developing our final recommendation for next week.
Great. We do have two public comment speakers, so why don't we go there? First, Gail Osharenko, if you're still here, so good, come on up, and then Marilyn Ricard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. I've already written some of you once, so I'll try to be as brief as possible, but I'm one of those people who has written a lot of regulations, has studied a lot, has recommended a lot, and I was kind of shocked when I read in the paper that you were going to do this regulation so that I couldn't use my fountain anymore, which I had converted from a bird bath back in December to being a circulating fountain, because if you have a bird bath, you have to clean it all the time. Like, once a week is really marginally enough. Birds need water, they need water all the time. They can do without the bird feeders, they cannot do without water sources, and especially in a drought. So if we're going to take care of the carp and the fish and the turtles and whatever else people put in their ponds, we need to take care of our wildlife. Audubon should be here. But I did leave with somebody a little bit of information about birds and their needs for water. Since I installed this circulating fountain, it's very, very little water use. Probably, if you flush the toilet twice, that's about how much water it would use. That's about how much water it has in it. Doesn't have a lot of water in it, but, you know, it drops down over the side. So I went to my water bills to see, did my water use increase? And guess what? My water use in the few months that I've had it since December is exactly the same as my water use from last year. I'm not using any water. I'm not seeing the water spill out. Water's not evaporating. I run it a couple hours a day. It needs to run, you know, roughly three hours a day to keep the bird bath clean. Now I don't have to empty the bird bath, splash all that water out, waste it, and fill it up again. So this is a kind of regulation that makes people really upset about regulation and really mad at environmentalists like me who, you know, are promoting regulations that are silly. On the other hand, I really applaud what you've done with the rates, that they don't hit those with low water use. We use two to four HCFs a month, which is, I think, well below the average.
That, please.
So anyway, applaud your doing that. That's the way to do it. Let's see if those regulations work. Let's not kick in silly things that are problematic.
Thank you.
And I think that's all I needed to say, but I forgot to give you the signed copy of the letter.
Okay, you can hand that to the clerk. Thank you very much.
I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, Orin Young, as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Ricard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmen. I am a owner at Casa Riviera, which is where Gail lives also. I am also on the Homeowners Association Board, and I'm a voter. And the main reason I'm here is we do have a pool, and we have, since November, upgraded it a great deal with solar panels, upgraded, a new filter, a new heater. They were overdue, but it's now working very efficiently. I'm in charge of the pool and the landscaping, which is a big job, and we have cut back all of the overgrown ivy so that we're not feeding water to a lot of ivy. We have cut back on our irrigation, and we have reduced our water usage from January to now by over 50%. So my point in saying all of that is that I hope that some of these things that are blanket are considered on a case-by-case basis because it feels like if you do proactive reduction, you should be considered, under some of these cases, and what I'm mostly concerned about is the pool cover, because we've already reduced. And if there are people that are abusing it, then I think it could be in effect, and it could be on a case-by-case. The fact that we do not have a pool cover, we're considered a commercial pool. We have 38 owners. We're about 3.5 acres from Mission Ridge down to Alameda Padre Serra, almost down to the Mission and next to the Tobes office of the Riviera Theater. So it's a big piece of property that was, you're looking like you don't know where it is. Do you know where the Riviera Theater is? It's next door. Okay. And it goes uphill, so we deal with a creek. We've cleaned that out. We've done a lot of proactive things. If we had to put a pool cover on at night, I'd have to do it. I'd have to take it off. It would be very expensive, and I talked to Village Pool, who does our service, and said that it would create algae and a lot of issues as far as bacteria. So I would hope that you either wait on the pool cover part of the ordinance or that you do it on a case-by-case basis. Let me think if I said anything else. Oh, we have abided by all the things that the city has already requested in order to check that everybody's doing the best water. We've had our water backflow devices checked, paid for that. There are four meters there. We have a meeting with your water conservation group that are coming next week. I just hope that, in the past, I've lived here long enough to be through bad droughts, and people that were conservative before it was issued as a big drought often cut their water usage and then were penalized by being taken down even further, where people who upped their water usage and then had 20% reduction were ahead of the game. So please be aware of that.
Thank you.
Am I over my time? Thank you.
You're over time, yeah. Okay. To the council, Ms. Mario.
I'd like to ask about if we put these rules in place or amended them today. What is the enforcement process? Who would go and look at a pool and see if there's a cover, and who would monitor fountains? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, first of all, these are proposed at this point. They would not be adopted until next week. The enforcement procedure would be, as currently contained in the municipal code, the items listed here would be regulations subject to violation. If a violation occurs, there's a process of successive notices of violation. The first notice is essentially a warning. There's no consequence. It is a legally-written document that cites the section of the code that was violated when it occurred, where it occurred, who witnessed it, and it provides notice to the customer that there was a violation, essentially as a warning. The second one provides a fine of up to $250. The third one could be another fine, up to $250, and a possible flow restrictor. And fourth and subsequent would be fine of up to $250, possible flow restrictor, or shut-off of water. And we go through those successively, but most problems we've addressed at the first or second violation.
I wasn't clear asking my question then. Is there a code enforcement officer that goes and looks? Is it a police officer who looks? Is it by a neighbor complaint?
We would expect that these would be addressed primarily by the field staff that we have that do our ongoing conservation education program. That's the approach we want to take first. It would be much the same as we do during normal times, too. We see people that haven't been aware of the provisions on waste of water. Our first approach is to meet with them, explain that there's a concern about waste of water, it is illegal. Typically, that addresses it. If we need to, we can issue a notice of violation. That becomes the first formal notice, and it is a warning. And if necessary, we can go beyond that, but very frequently have we had to go beyond that point.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, we will not be doing any patrolling for offenses. This will be something that primarily will be complaint-driven. And again, these are regulations consistent with what the state has been rolling out as well and consistent with what we implemented before, leading up to it, and we, you know, very few of these led to any type of enforcement. Most people that we worked with were more than happy to comply. There are several different types of covers out there. You can get really fancy ones that are automatic, and you can get very simple type, bubble-wrapped type stuff that just lays on the surface and you pull it off. So there are different combinations of it. What I think, the point that I kind of emphasize, is we are asking right now, not for conservation, that's normally what we do every day, we are asking for extraordinary conservation measures. These are things, the city is changing their behavior in many ways throughout the city, and we're asking the community to do the same, just to change your behavior for the duration of this drought to help us conserve the precious resources that we have. And when it's over, we can go back to doing a lot of what I would consider normal conservation things, but these are things that are also, I think, just in general, just good behavior. I mean, I hear that they're heating their pool. That's great that they're heating a pool. It's probably a good idea to get a cover on it because that will help trap that heat in the pool and probably save on heating costs and other things that go along with it. So, you know, none of these are meant to be, you know, we're not going to be driving around trying to, you know, bust people for this. We really want to use this to educate people and help people to get the whole community to meet this goal. And if people are conserving already, they're not going to be penalized by the direction we're going with. The rates specifically were put together to kind of really reward those who are already being conservation-minded.
I have another question. So you have targeted fountains because there's evaporation. So say a fountain holes and circulates, you know, for the sake of mathematical simplicity, 10 gallons, that I know it's probably bigger, but... So how much of that evaporates? Does it matter how much it sprays? Can you just tell the public, you know, if you're making an argument that we should do something about fountains? do something about fountains, tell me about why it's a waste of water?
So ornamental fountains actually are huge users of water. They don't seem like it, but there's a lot of evaporative losses with it, and you're constantly having to feed these ornamental fountains. Not to mention, fountains are intentionally, they were a point of celebrating the abundance of water. And so there is a symbolic element to it, too, but really the splashing, the dripping of water, it really accelerates a lot of the evaporation. Fountains notoriously have to be cleaned out frequently unless they're heavily chlorinated. So there's just, there's just a lot of elements about a fountain that just make it, I think, inappropriate going, being in a drought, to be something that we really have to hold on to. I think if we're looking to think, we're thinking of things that really are low priority, a fountain kind of falls in that category. Now, we wanted to separate that out from whether it has fish in it or turtles or something like that. It's kind of in a separate category that we're not in, not going after. We're just going after most of the fountains, like you've seen on State Street and down at the waterfront. We've gotten all those turned off. They are nice. They are great. It's great to celebrate waters, particularly when you live in such a dry climate. But right now, this isn't that time to celebrate. We need to conserve.
Okay. And so, but when you weigh whether a fountain wastes water or watering a lawn wastes water, like, isn't the lawn worse?
No, no, actually...
Ms. Jordan here can explain, but actually, a fountain uses substantially more water than irrigated lawn.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and councilmembers, we have calculated the amount of water that any evaporative body uses, pools, fountains, and it's in the range of, if you're looking at it as inches, it's in the range of 56 to 58 inches, where on average, a lawn is using in the, more in the range of 48. So it's higher per area in water use than a lawn.
Okay.
It's to the council now. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Rouse? Mr. White? We're ready. It's back to council.
Well, just, I want to say that the comments, I think, about adding the flexibility to the ordinance, and it sounds like by going to resolution, this just makes it a more flexible tool than we had before, and opening it up to a broader range of hazards and problems, I think is a wise thing to do. We've all certainly thought about the tunnel collapsing or just some, something in our system breaking down that would cause the need for these same kinds of restrictions. So I think that was a, it's a good idea. I do, I think I have bits of the reservation around the fountain issue as well. It just feels like a, if someone is really conserving, that it shows up in their numbers, and that that's... So that's an area where I find myself resisting a little bit as well. But I think we're doing, this is absolutely needed going forward. We're needing to get our community motivated yet more to conserve, and this is one more step.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'm a little afraid that the public's going to laugh at us when we're, when it comes to this fountain issue, because profess what you weigh, I don't see fountains, particularly little home fountains, doing much for evaporation. So I wonder if we might not consider the use of water, and ornamental water features in fountains of more than 10 gallons is prohibited. In other words, those little things that just sort of recirculate off the wall are fine, and this lady pointed out, it's hardly using anything. So, you know, we can be a little draconian. The problem with that is, I understand the intent is to make it really serious, but if you overstate something, people go, "Oh, to hell with this," and just don't do it at all. And that's certainly what we don't want. So I'd like to reconsider that and revisit that. But I appreciate your talking about the coy exception. I think that's a justified one. And I understand the difficulty in writing something that's sort of one size fits all. We got to have a little flexibility. So I would just suggest that maybe we might look at a five, 10 gallons, whatever is appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. Hart.
Well, I agree with everything everybody else has said. In fact, to put a highlight on it, I think that Mr. Hagmark shared with the Finance Committee earlier today that the first month when we had rains, we had a 15% reduction in water use, and then this last month, only a 5% reduction. And we're shooting for a 20% reduction each one of those two months. So we're falling, as a community, far short of that, and that's serious. And it needs to be broadcast loud and clear that we are serious about this, and half, people do need to do special things and extraordinary things. But I'm kind of conflicted, too, by some of the specific details of this. And I, and it does, while the facts, as you described them, surprised me about how significant fountains are in relation to lawn. I didn't know that, so that's helpful to me. On the other hand, you know, we're allowing people to wash their cars, albeit with a shut-off hose. So we're kind of making interesting value judgments about what's okay to do. And I don't know that they're consistently logical. They're symbolic and important, and I think, and I understand them, so, but I'm struggling with this as well. And I'm wondering if there isn't some way that we can get to the point, the fundamental point, which is, you know, without creating a huge staff process, I don't know that a million people would even take advantage of it, but if you had some kind of an exception thing where somebody could say, "Look, this is, I'm a good water user, and yet I have this thing that's outside of your rules. Could you, you know, could you, is that okay?" I don't know if there's a way to do that. I would hate for thousands of people to be using the staff time to do that, but at the same time, it's not a good idea to have rules, you know, and have people who have stuff in their backyard just go, "Ah, it doesn't matter, because nobody's going to see me." So that's my comment on the item.
Just for clarification, so the ordinance is about more the mechanism of things, and these details that we're talking about, that's more of a resolution. That's what you were saying earlier, to be, as Mr. White said, a little more nimble about flexible. So we could have, we could update resolutions much easily, much more easily, depending on the experience that we're seeing in the city, the reduction of water, if there's a rash of people buying bird fountains and things like that. I mean, you know, I mean, we can, we can adjust it a little easier as time goes on with the experience that we have. Is that, am I understanding this process correctly?
Madam Mayor, that would be correct. I mean, that's kind of the flexibility of the resolution. So if it was the council's decision to make the regulations out of the gate, a little less restrictive with the thought that if we need to, you could expand on it, that's certainly something.
Right. So I think that's where, what I'm hearing, and I know we have a couple of other speakers to speak on this, but there's an educational piece, there's a symbolic piece, there's an actual piece, there's, you know, there's the actual water, water piece. What, I was in New York last week. Sorry. That, some things you don't want to jump too far, but yet show that it's serious. And so if something like what Mr. Hotchkiss said, has a capacity limit, you don't want a 50-gallon or 100-gallon fountain, that might be excessive. But a small one that just has a little zen garden next to it is really not causing a problem. Is that worth a $250 fine and a complaint by a neighbor, that kind of thing? And I can see where that kind of issue can get kind of silly. And yet, if we go on for several months more without any rain, and things get worse and worse, and we need to be more strict, we still have the ability to say, "Sorry, the zen garden's got to be completely dry for now." That we have, that's the process that we're looking at here?
Right. We'd absolutely have that flexibility.
All right. So that helps me a bit. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not to beat this issue into the ground, but I didn't understand your explanation about the evaporative comparison between fountains and lawns. Could you go over this?
Sure. Madam Mayor and Councilmember Francisco, we, so we look at, say, for evaporation, for lawns, evapotranspiration, it's in the range of 45 inches per year.
What does that mean, 45 inches per year?
So as we calculate, that's the, of one, if you look at, say, you know, a thousand-square-foot lawn or something like that, you would use that number to calculate for that area how many inches is being lost in water use per year.
So are you saying 1,000 square feet covered to a depth of 45 inches?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And so when we looked at the numbers for, we were doing this for fountains, and when we looked at updating the city's amendment to the plumbing code, we looked at minimizing fountain areas to 25-square-foot surface area. And we looked at, throughout California, and Nevada has a lot of research on this because they limit fountain size. It was in the range of 54 to 56 inches per, you know, year, per the surface area.
Okay. So the, I guess the only, the only thing that comes to mind there is if it's a really tiny fountain, it's probably an insignificant.
It certainly makes a difference the size of the surface area.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I appreciate Madam Mayor's clarification about the resolution process and the nimbleness which we can go forward with. I'm trying to, you know, kind of separate the trivial from the vital and the, you know, the basic human needs, health issues, you know, versus, you know, landscaping, where I think the lion's share of the water really does go. I'm certainly not going to try to challenge Ms. Jordan on her numbers, that's for sure. But I'm trying to think back, when we had the drought in the '90s, and when people were standing in buckets and taking showers and taking the water from the buckets and flushing their toilets, and, now, I'm sure this is before a lot of the onset of the low-flow restrictors and things we have today, but we saved a tremendous amount of water in a hurry at that point in time. And I wonder if anybody can tell me, in terms of the stage-two conditions we're looking at today, how similar they are to what we proposed at that point in time? Maybe, Mr. White, maybe you remember. Ms. Jordan, were you, were you on staff back then, or?
I'm on, just after.
Oh, okay. Actually, Mr. White, if you wouldn't mind. And Mr. Ferguson probably would know the best, but, because he has more brain cells working than I do. But the one thing I do remember is that the rate structure, and you've heard me harp on that so strongly, is that the rate structure kicked in right above the life, the lifeline amount. It went up, I think it doubled, is what I recall, that the rates went, after four HCF, it went, it might have doubled and...
Tripled, actually.
It tripled, okay. So it just, the hit was much quicker and much harder. And we're, we're coming in with a very, kind of a gentle nudge instead of a slap in the face on the rate, on the rate system. Right. Maybe Mr. Ferguson could... Oh, we also did things like drought police, which really did not work. That was not good. So the comments, that part of it, you know, you just, we're not going there, because that was not effective, so.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember White, just to clarify, the regulations are part of an umbrella of approach that we have when we deal with this. It's part of what worked last time, savings of up to 50%. The regulations serve as not only the law as far as what is allowed by our customers, but it's also the vision for how we're going to get to where we need to be with a 20% shortage now, and who knows what it's going to be if we have another dry year. It's going to be much worse. This is a stage-two, so we've tried to temper the regulations to address the stage-two. I expect we'll see something more severe if we get to stage-three. I think that goes without saying. As far as the rates, we, the rates you were describing there, where it tripled and then tripled and then tripled again, up to $29, that was a stage-three response. We're not there yet, but we do have a situation that needs to be taken seriously, and these regulations are intended to provide that sort of vision to the community so that the motivation to haul the water in a bucket will be there, and the thought will be there. And that's what it will take to help us get the savings that we need.
Well, that's why I think it's important to talk about the history of this, and wherever we're going at that time, people still are, are still talking about, "Well, when we fire up the decel plant, we'll have X, Y, and Z." And I think now that we're getting a reality check on those numbers coming back at us in reasonably, not short order, but we will get them. And people can really translate that to what it's going to mean in terms of our water usage going out the next 20 years. I think that's really important to have that perspective. Thank you.
So what I'm hearing in terms of for next week on these detailed pieces about fountains is perhaps there's a capacity issue, smaller ones for now, but, I mean, I think that's some, like, a large fountain, like the ones at Sternsworf, okay, turn that one off. You know, the ones that's nice outside Casa de las Fuente, which is a very, pretty big fountain, turn that one off. But for now, anyway, it sounds like these smaller ones might just be a little too excessive, and maybe we need to revisit that in the next few months, determine, you know, how we're doing with water conservation. Because I agree with Mr. Hart, when I heard, actually, I saw Commissioner Megan Burney tweet about only a 5% reduction in water in this last month, that was alarming. And, you know, we've been trying to get the message out, but for whatever reason, it's not resonating. So, but we don't want to overdo and be, you know, we want to focus on the measured results and not worry about little things around the side that people might not take seriously, and then not take the whole thing seriously. So those would be some of my comments coming back. I have a question about the pool. So it says, "Cover the pool while not in use." So, okay, the YMCA has an outdoor pool, and maybe there's a half an hour and no one's in the pool. Do they have to cover the pool for that half hour and uncover it for the next, when the next class occurs? Or do they cover it when the Y closes at the end of the day overnight? I mean, what does it mean in use, I guess? And I think that addresses issues where there's an HOA or a pool that might have multiple users. Is there a certain time? I mean, is, or is it just, you know, the moment you get out of the pool, whoever it is, the five-year-old in that Y has to cover the pool? I mean, I don't know. I mean, can you explain that to me?
So, Madam Mayor, we're just looking here to, you know, certainly not going to be going after people because they've been out of their pool for a half hour or an hour, but in general practice, we're looking for people that if, you know, most homeowners, they use the pool maybe once a day, and then once they're done, they close it back up. You know, there's a lot of municipal pools. There's constant programs going through theirs. And so the need to cover those is probably a lot less urgency, and that's not really what we're targeting this. We're really targeting the pools that most homeowners have that remain uncovered and typically are unused most of the day.
Right.
And so there are a lot of different options. We kick this around a lot about, you know, the cost of a cover, and like I said, there's a big spectrum of costs, and we're just trying to look at, you know, we consider a good practice, anyway, is to get those pools covered.
So my suggestion would be, I know, it makes sense to cover the pool. And perhaps there's a differentiation between a single-family home pool and a multi-family in terms of what's considered in use, and, or something like that. I don't know if there's some language that would be reasonable, and I guess that's a city attorney question, but otherwise, I can picture, if there's a homeowner association and there's one person on the board who's, you know, then going to say, "That pool's been uncovered for 20 minutes," and, you know what I mean? And it's just like, it's just going to create a problem. Where I could see a single-family house with a pool in the back, the family knows when it's going to swim and when it's not, and that's a, it's a different scenario. Or like Los Spanos or something like that. So those are just comments. I'm not quite sure how to answer the question, but that's just some, you asked for feedback, so... And we have a couple of other comments. Mr. White? Oh, well, yeah, Mr. White and Ms. Maria.
Yeah, this is a detail, but, and that is, something in the exercise facilities, et cetera, the education is needed around towels in those places. We have it in the hotel rooms. It's really great, and, but at least what I witness is that it's like Ollie Ollioxen at the, at the health clubs where the pile of towels is there, and they, a whole bunch of them are taken. So just a little education in that area might help, too.
Ms. Maria.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion and see if it goes somewhere to move staff's recommendation and to forbid the use of fountains unless there are fish or wildlife associated with getting benefit from it. And then if it seems like that's out of control, or maybe it can be stage-three, that we would revisit the fountain issue.
Just a point of clarification, though. The issues related to that second part of your motion, we're really deciding next week.
Okay, we're deciding, okay.
Right. Today is just more feedback, so we can come back and then, I think, heard the feedback. But today's adoption of the ordinance is not in relation to the details about fountains.
Oh, to the details, yeah.
Right? So I think we can introduce the ordinance, and next week, we can have the details about fountains and things, and they've heard loud and clear some feedback that we've already had. Does that make more sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So would you like to amend your motion?
I do, I will amend my motion to move staff recommendation as written here, A and B.
Okay. So, so just for the public and those listening, next week, we'll have, if you want, to give us comments about different, reasonable, rational, logical ways of reduction of water usage in a stage-two. That would be helpful, because we'll be making that decision next week. Right? Okay. All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Great. Thank you. And Ms. Jordan, you see Mr. Ferguson there, we might be calling you back from North Carolina, or wherever it is that you, where you're going, but good luck to you. I know you're moving from us at the end of the month, so thank you for your leadership.
Going someplace where it rains.
Yeah, I know. Don't, don't get, don't get bored of the rain, right. Okay. Councilmember Committee assignment reports.
What did you say?
I first want to thank Pro Tem Maria for attending a whole lot of events. I was out of town last week, and it was a busy week, and I know you were, you usually are busy, but you were extra busy last week, so thank you. Ms. Maria?
I felt like a hamster on the wheel, Madam Mayor, and I really admire how much you do now that I was doing it, too. I attended National Train Day, and so the fight continues to have commuter rail from Ventura to Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara to Lompoc and beyond, and maybe we can relieve the congestion on Highway 101 that way. So the youth leadership banquet was on Friday night, and the young man who has chosen Outstanding Teen of the Year is Augustine Bernabe, went through a lot of personal issues, and racked up more than 1,000 community service hours. Talk about somebody who's busy doing things for the community. I congratulate Augustine on that, and also our teen programs. They really, it just feels so good to go to that event and hear about teens doing wonderful things. We were also, Councilmember Hart and I, at the Little Outdoor Libraries, also another happy story of these small library cabinets, and they're, the project was at the Housing Authority, and I think it's books for children and adults, and so it's promoting reading and literacy in our Housing Authority families. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Like a lot of us here, I was at the UCSB Economic Forecast, three hours of pretty intense listening, a lot of it interesting. After a while, I just couldn't take out anymore, so I sort of bled out. Secondly, I guess a personal thing, but also it's kind of nifty, we got some history parked out at the airport in the form of three bombers from World War II, the B-17, big, big plane, B-24, B-25, and also a fighter, I think a P-51 is out there. And if you want to see some, get a sense of what that war was like, and the people that defended our liberty, it's, it's really worth a visit.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Visit, Visit Santa Barbara General Meeting on May 7th, where a truly brilliant presentation was made on branding. Branding is just not exactly my cup of tea, but they, they picked a real spark plug of a guy to, to make that presentation, and I thought, one of the pieces of the Visit Santa Barbara meeting that had you and others speaking as well, opening the theme of educating our own citizens about our community, such that when visitors come, they are getting educated by, by just our own folks here. So I thought that was a really neat variation on the theme. And, see, I also attended on, lost my dates here, I attended the Santa Barbara County Fire Chiefs Association Summary of this year's Wild and Fire Season, a, up at Fleischmann Auditorium, had, they had a different format, where they, they basically went through how they fight a fire. They started at the, with the Incident Command System, and all the different logistics of fighting a fire. So it was an interesting sort of format that they used for presenting what's, what we can expect in the way of Wild and Fire. The rains that we did get, did have provided us, obviously, a bit of respite from the extreme wildfire hazard. However, of course, what we're experiencing even today is, this great heat is, is going to make that, that respite all the, all the smaller. And we, of course, who knows what the season really will bring, but of course, they're bracing themselves for a, for a tough fire season.
Thank you. Pen Reed, item number 19.
Conference with labor negotiator?
Thank you, and we will adjourn from closed session. Thank you very much.[1761.11]